So, good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council on Wednesday, January twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharlin.
Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross. Mr. Mosley.
Here.
Mrs. Kale Smith. Mrs. Straussberger. Mrs. Warwick.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle President.
Here.
Five members present.
Thank you very much. Next, we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance and we'll pause for a moment of silence afterwards. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice. Thank you very much. Our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind everyone that the rules of council state, the comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which may be before City Council and profoundly is not permitted. After you recall, please restate your name, provide your neighborhood for the record, and you'll be given three minutes to speak. Our first registered speaker is Amy Zias.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Thank you for your time this morning. I hope everyone's staying warm. My name is Amy Zias. I live in the Beachview neighborhood in Coghill's district. I'm here to speak briefly about PRT's Bulk Fair program. If you're not aware yet, PRT has officially launched a Bulk Fair program. It allows for multifamily property owners who have ten or more units in a physical location, also schools and employers that have at least ten eligible employees to buy passes for their employers or residents in bulk. A normal monthly pass from PRT costs ninety-seven fifty. Through the Bulk Fair program, it costs only twenty-eight dollars. And the landlord, the employer, or the school can offer these passes for free or pass on the cost so long as they're not charging more than they themselves are paying. And I would also like to add that in cities like Philadelphia, other areas of the country, employers of a certain size are usually mandated to offer transit benefits. I know that that might not be feasible in Pittsburgh, but I really want to encourage all of you as leaders in your community to not only see if you can buy passes for your employee and encourage the safety of bypasses, but also reach out to any large employers in your district and encourage them to offer this benefit. It's so important that transit is properly funded and that we encourage people to use transit, public transit. So this is really just a win-win for everyone and something I'm really excited about. And like I said, I hope that you will advocate within your own district for its use. And yeah, I'll just leave it at that. But thank you so much.
Thank you very much for joining us. Our next speaker is Ralph Williams. There you go. Mr. Williams, we can't hear you, although I did see you come off of mute. We still don't have Ralph Williams, so if there's anyone else who has joined us for a public comment, if you would raise your hand, that way we can come to you. Okay, so Ralph Williams' hand go back up. And you're currently on mute, Mr. Williams. There you go. And we still can't hear you, Mr. Williams. And no other hands went up. What I'll do is maybe if you log out and log back in, I'll come to you at the end of the meeting. With that, that does exhaust our list of speakers, which takes us to the presentation of papers, beginning with Councilman Sharlin, Chair of Human Resources.
Councilwoman Anthony Coghill presents Bill fourteen-twenty-three, Resolution Amending and Supplementing the Rules of Council by Adding Rule Thirteen: Hearings for Appointments of Heads of Administrative Units.
Thank you. That takes us to Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Innovation, Performance, Asset Management, and Technology. I don't believe we have Councilwoman Gross with us, and she does not have any papers today. So that takes us to Councilman Mosley, Chair of Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs.
Councilwoman Kohari Mosley presents Bill fourteen-oh-four, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for twenty-three-ten West Liberty Avenue, Pittsburgh one-five-two-two-six, at no cost to the city. Bill fourteen-oh-five, Resolution Requesting the Approval of an Intergovernmental/Intermunicipal Transfer of a Liquor License from Los Patrones, Inc., Located at eleven-thirty-eight to eleven-forty-one Freeport Road, Pittsburgh one-five-two-three-eight, to the applicant Riva Hospitality Group, Doing Business as Riva Modern Indian Cuisine, Located at two-twenty North Highland Avenue, Pittsburgh one-five-two-oh-six.
Thank you. Next is Councilwoman Kale Smith, Chair of Recreation Youth and Senior Services. She has one paper.
Councilwoman Teresa Kale Smith presents Bill fourteen-oh-six, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number eight-sixty-three of two thousand and eighteen, Effective January first, two thousand and nineteen, as amended, entitled Resolution Adopting and Approving the Two Thousand and Nineteen Capital Budget and the Two Thousand and Nineteen Community Development Block Grant Program, Approving the Two Thousand and Seventeen through Two Thousand and Twenty-two Capital Improvement Program by Reducing the Open Door by eight thousand five hundred dollars and Increasing Crafton Heights United Presbyterian Church Doing Business as the Open Door Youth Outreach by eight thousand five hundred dollars and Authorize Subsequent Agreements.
Thank you. And next is Councilwoman Straussberger, Chair of Finance and Law, with I believe seven papers.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilperson Erica Straussberger presents Bill fourteen-oh-seven, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Mary Ann Steng and her Attorneys, Ainsman Levine, LLC, For a Single Payment in Two Thousand and Twenty-five in an Amount Not to Exceed Ten Thousand Dollars in Full and Final Settlement of Litigation, Filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas. Bill fourteen-oh-eight, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Noel Phillips and her attorneys, Mills and Henry Attorneys at Law, for a Single Payment in Two Thousand and Twenty-five in an Amount Not to Exceed Twenty Thousand Dollars in Full and Final Settlement of Litigation, Filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas, and for Acquisition of the Parcel Identified as Fifty-one-six-six Broad Street. Bill fourteen-oh-nine, Resolution Amending Resolution Five Forty-seven of two thousand and twenty-four, Which Authorizes the Mayor and the Director of the Office of Management and Budget to Enter into an Agreement or Agreements with Pittsburgh Futures for Professional Services relating to Leadership Development Training by Increasing the Authorized Spend by seventy-six thousand eight hundred dollars for Services in Two Thousand and Twenty-five for a new total cost not to exceed three hundred thirty-eight thousand one hundred thirty-six dollars over four years. Bill fourteen-ten, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Finance to Enter into a License Agreement with the Pittsburgh Steelers, LLC, to Allow for the Use of the City Seal on Official Steelers-Branded Merchandise at Zero Cost to the City. Bill fourteen-twenty-four, Resolution Amending Resolution Number two-ninety-three of two thousand and twenty-four, Which Authorizes the Mayor and the Director of City Planning to Enter into a Professional Services Agreement with Bromberg and Associates, LLC, For Effective Communication Services by Exercising the Contract Option to Extend the Term for One Year and by Increasing the Total Spend by one hundred fifty thousand dollars for a new not-to-exceed amount of six hundred twenty-eight thousand nine hundred seventy-six dollars. Bill fourteen-twenty-five, An Ordinance Directing the Allegheny County Board of Elections to Place Before the Qualified Voters of the City of Pittsburgh at the Two Thousand and Twenty-five May Primary Election a Referendum Question. Shall the Pittsburgh Home Rule Charter Article One Home Rule Powers Definitions be Supplemented by Adding a New Section, One-oh-five Local Governance, By Prohibiting the Discrimination on the Basis of Race, Religion, National Origin, or Association or Affiliation with any Nation or Foreign State in Conducting Business of the City? And Bill fourteen-twenty-six, Ordinance Directing the Allegheny County Board of Elections to Place Before the Qualified Voters of the City of Pittsburgh at the Two Thousand and Twenty-five May Primary Election a Referendum Question. Shall the Pittsburgh Home Rule Charter Article One Home Rule Powers Definitions be Supplemented by Adding a New Section, One-oh-four Amendments to Charter, By Prohibiting the Use of the Home Rule Charter Amendment Process to Add Duties or Obligations Beyond the Lawful Scope of the City's Authority?
And that takes us to Councilwoman Warwick, Chair of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Councilwoman Barbara Warwick presents Bill fourteen-eleven, Resolution Providing for an Agreement or Agreements with Tool Design, LLC, For Costs Associated with the West Pittsburgh Reach Neighborhood Mobility Plan and Providing for the Payment of Costs thereof not to exceed one hundred four thousand two hundred seventy-four dollars. Bill fourteen-twelve, Resolution Authorizing the Taking, Appropriating, and Condemning by the City of Pittsburgh of Certain Easements Necessary for the Completion of Temporary Construction Work for Sidewalk Construction and Associated Miscellaneous Work for Public Transportation Purposes through Eminent Domain and Further Authorizing the Payment of Just Compensation and Necessary and Incidental Acquisition Costs Related thereto at an Amount Not to Exceed twenty-five thousand dollars reimbursable at eighty percent. And Bill fourteen-thirteen, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to Enter into a Supplemental Agreement or Agreements with CDR McGuire, Inc., for Project Design Management Services and Reviews in Connection with Various City of Pittsburgh Projects to Add Funding for the Preliminary Engineering Phase, Increasing the Total Not to Exceed to three million seven hundred eleven thousand two hundred fifty-six dollars and seventy-six cents, a Net Increase of zero dollars reimbursable at ninety-five percent.
Thank you. And that takes us to Councilwoman Wilson, Chair of Land Use Economic Development, who I believe has three papers.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilman Bobby Wilson presents Bill fourteen-fourteen, Resolution Providing for an Agreement or Agreements with Clear Consulting for a Historic Survey of the Beachview District and Related Costs in the Amount Not to Exceed Ten Thousand Dollars. Bill fourteen-fifteen, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor, the Director of Permits, Licenses, and Inspections to Enter on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh into a Professional Services Agreement or Agreements with Ground Technology, Inc., Doing Business as Deapalonia Geotechnical Professional Service that Include Assessments, Evaluations, Land Remediation Plans, and Expert Testimony of Properties Subject to Active Life Safety Code Enforcement Violations for a Total Cost not to Exceed three hundred thousand dollars over three years. And Bill fourteen-sixteen, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Permits, Licenses, and Inspections for the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of the International Code Council for the Purchase of Two Thousand and Twenty-one ICC Building Code Books for Building Code Officers and Officials at a Cost not to Exceed forty thousand fifty-eight dollars and ninety cents.
Thank you. And I have three bills. Could we do the sponsored bill first?
Councilman R. Daniel Lavelle presents Bill fourteen-seventeen, An Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title Nine, Zoning Code Article One, Introduction and Establishments, Section Nine-O-two-point-oh-three, Zoning Map, to Rezone Parcels Forty-five A-one-six-six and Forty-five E-four-three from Single-Unit Detached Residential High Density to Urban-Center Mixed Use.
Thank you. Now the two communications.
Bill fourteen-eighteen, Communication from Jake Pollak, Director of Office of Management and Budget, Submitting to City Council the Attached Status Update from the Grants Office for the Week Ended January seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five. And Bill fourteen-nineteen, Communication from Jennifer Olzinger, Chief Procurement Officer, Office of Management and Budget, Submitting to City Council the Attached Report of P Card Users and Their Spending Limits.
Need a motion to read, receive, and file?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to reports of committee for final action, beginning with Councilman Anthony Coghill, presenting the Committee of Public Safety and Wellness.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Anthony Coghill presents Bill thirteen-ninety-nine, Report of the Committee on Public Safety and Wellness for January fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill thirteen-seventy-six, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor, the Director of the Office of Management and Budget and the Director of the Department of Public Safety to Enter into an Agreement or Agreements with the National Association of County and City Health Officials for the Purpose of Receiving Grant Funds from the Post-Overdose Training in Trauma-Informed Practices in the Amount Not to Exceed Twenty Thousand Dollars for Training and Support of the City's Office of Community Health and Safety.
You have heard the reading in the title of the bill. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye where name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharlin.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kale Smith. Mrs. Straussberger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle President.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bill having received illegally required number of votes is passed finally, and that takes us to Councilwoman Barbara Warwick, presenting the Committee of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Councilwoman Barbara Warwick presents Bill fourteen-hundred, Report of the Committee on Public Works and Infrastructure for January fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill thirteen-seventy-nine, Resolution Providing for an Agreement or Agreements to Set forth Financial Obligations and Maintenance Responsibilities for the Pedestrian Facilities with PennDOT for Local Costs Associated with Work to be Done on State Route Four Hundred, North Dallas Avenue, Bennett Street, and A-45 ADA Ramps Constructed and Inspected by PennDOT and Further Providing for Reimbursement to PennDOT of the Estimated Costs Not to Exceed thirteen thousand nine hundred ninety dollars and forty-four cents.
You have heard the reading in the title of the bill. Is there any discussion? See no hands. Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye where name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharlin.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kale Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Straussberger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle President.
Aye.
Ayes, nine, noes, zero.
The bill having received illegally required number of votes is passed finally, and that moves us to Councilperson Robert Sharlin, presenting the Committee of Human Resources.
Councilperson Robert Sharlin presents Bill fourteen-oh-one, Report of the Committee on Human Resources for January fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill thirteen-seventy-five, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Human Resources and Civil Service to Enter into a Professional Services Agreement with UPMC Benefits Management Services, Inc., Doing Business as Work Partners for Services relating to Providing Third-Party Administrative Services of the City of Pittsburgh's Workers' Compensation Program for Costs Not to Exceed five million two thousand seven hundred sixty-four dollars over the course of four years.
You have heard the reading in the title of the bill. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye where name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharlin.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kale Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Straussberger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle President.
Aye.
Ayes, nine, noes, zero.
The bill having received illegally required number of votes is passed finally, and that takes us to Councilwoman Deborah Gross, presenting the Committee of Innovation, Performance, Asset Management, and Technology.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Deborah Elgros presents Bill fourteen-oh-two, Report of the Committee on Innovation, Performance, Asset Management, and Technology for January fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill thirteen-seventy-seven, Resolution Amending Resolution Eight Forty-one of two thousand and twenty-three, Which Authorizes the City of Pittsburgh to Enter into a Professional Services Agreement and/or Contract with Core Business Technologies for Software, Equipment, and Services related to Payment Processing and Cash Sharing Systems for the Department of Finance and the Bureau of Police by Extending the Contract by One Year and Increasing the Approved Amount by ninety-eight thousand nine hundred fifty-five dollars for an amended total cost not to exceed three hundred ninety-six thousand fifty-six dollars and sixty cents.
You have heard the reading in the title of the bill. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye where name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharlin.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kale Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Straussberger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle President.
Aye.
Ayes, nine, noes, zero.
Thank you. The bill having received illegally required number of votes is passed finally. And finally, Councilman Kari Mosley, presenting the Committee on Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilman Kohari Mosley presents Bill fourteen-oh-three, Report of the Committee on Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs for January fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill thirteen-seventy-eight, Resolution Authorizing a Cooperation Agreement or Agreements Providing for the Transfer of Funds not to exceed seven million nine hundred six thousand three hundred nineteen dollars and thirty-seven cents to the City of Pittsburgh Equipment Leasing Authority for the Purchase and Leasing of Vehicles, Equipment and Accessories, Equipment Support Infrastructure, and Professional Services for Use by City of Pittsburgh Departments.
You have heard the reading in the title of the bill. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye where name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharlin.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kale Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Straussberger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle President.
Aye.
Ayes, nine, noes, zero.
The bill having received illegally required number of votes is passed finally. That takes us to motions and resolutions. Is there anything from members? Seeing none, I did say I would try to come back to Mr. Williams for his public comment. Are we able to, is he able to provide public comment at this time? You're off of mute, Mr. Williams. Are you able to?
Everybody hear me? Hello?
We can hear you now.
Okay, great. Wow, I finally fixed technical issues here. Nicole weather has a lot to do with it too sometimes. But it's great to have be here today. I want to thank you, President Lavelle, members of council, for letting me speak today. I want to congratulate Barbara Warwick. I want to congratulate Anthony Coghill, and I want to congratulate Bob Sharlin for your meeting last Wednesday when you pulled the guy in who was involved with the leasing thing for the city public works trucks and all that stuff. Listen, this snow stuff that's laid, the snow that's on the ground, that's not in the salt trucks, they're not doing what they need to do because they don't have the appropriate manpower and supplies. And I'm glad that you guys hauled this guy to the carpet kind of, and I'm really happy that you guys pulled him in and said, hey, look, what can we do here? And I'm glad right now that you approved the leasing of these vehicles so that that way they can get these streets salted and plowed and get, because that affects public safety as well. And I know some people in my building here are handicapped, having trouble getting around, having trouble getting where they need to be because of, you know, lack of salt trucks, the public transportation, can't get around. There's a lot of things that are involved in this, and I'm glad that the three of you have stepped up and said something, and I'm glad that you guys care enough to step up and say something, considering the fact that it's really not all your fault. All right, I also want to congratulate Kari Mosley for stepping up for that building up in East Hills. I want to say, you know, I'm glad that you stepped up for that because I'm going to tell you something right now. That's unacceptable what's going on with that building up in East Hills, and I want to give you kudos for doing that as well. And the update on PC TV and working with my fellow producers, and we have come up with a name for our, for the new TV station. It's going to be called Greater Pittsburgh Access Television, and we will be launching probably in April or May. We're working on some stuff with the cable company, and I want to thank those here on council who stepped up and helped out. And I don't want to thank the ones who did not step up and help out because there's a few of you that did not when I asked you to, and that's fine. But there are a few who have stepped up and helped out, and I want to appreciate that as well. All right, you guys have yourselves a great, stay warm, have a great one, talk to you again.
Thank you very much. That will take us to our meeting announcements. Due to the freezing temperatures, council will hold our sending committee meeting virtually this afternoon at one-thirty. Speaker registration will close at twelve-thirty this afternoon. To register as speaker of this meeting, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage by the deadline or Carter Clerk's Office at four-one-two-two-five-five-two-one-three-eight. I believe we were all here, therefore we need a motion to approve the minutes.
Mr. President. Mr. President, I'm sorry, I hate to interrupt, but just coming back, I want to thank everybody for being there for my family and I during the passing of our mother. Everybody was so kind, and so I thank everybody for that. But I also know that we've been getting a lot of phone calls about snow removal and issues with snow removal in the city of Pittsburgh. So I do want to call for a post agenda on that. Hopefully, we can work through and talk through things before we get to a post agenda. But I think the public has the right to know, you know, what we're doing and what we're going to do differently to make sure we're addressing these issues. So a motion to, for a post agenda regarding snow removal in the city of Pittsburgh.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed will work with Councilwoman Smith in the clerk's office to get that scheduled. Anything else from members?
I just wanted to send condolences to the family of State Representative Matt Gergli. I didn't know Matt Gergli well, but I knew, I know Mark Gergli very well. My Mark Gergli served in the state legislature with my wife, you know, several years ago, and I've gotten to know him, you know, very well over the last fifteen to twenty years. That's why I just wanted to send, you know, my condolences. I know he doesn't represent the city of Pittsburgh, but I know many in the city of Pittsburgh have felt the grief of losing. the grief of, of losing State Representative uh Matt Gergli, so I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Anything else? If not, motion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
So moved. Okay.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, and I'll see you at one thirty.